Call to order, the time is 6:00 P.M. Before we begin, I kindly ask all council members to please put away cell phones. If you need to conduct personal business during the meeting, please make a motion for a recess. For those participating by phone, please ensure your phone is muted unless you are speaking. And when speaking, please remember to state your name for the benefit of those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to all attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located at the back of the council chambers above the clock. Our meetings are governed by Robert's Rules of Order in accordance with Wassila Municipal Code 2 dot 04 dot 090. In order to maintain an orderly and respectful discussion, I respectfully request the council to observe the following guidelines. Please seek recognition before speaking. No member may speak more than twice on the same motion without an affirmative vote to suspend the rules. No member may speak a second time on a matter until all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. These rules are in place to ensure that everyone's right to speak is respected and to prevent any one voice from dominating the discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cottle?
Here.
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson is absent and excused. Councilmember Crafton?
Here.
Councilmember Vlog?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
You do have a call, Madam Mayor. All members are with us in chambers except Councilmember Johnson, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and Councilmember Rubio, would you leave?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. I would like to, at this time, I would like to strike the executive session because they have not had, they have not met enough to report on anything. There will be a report next meeting. So if I hear no objection. And I want to add Cassie under, for her presentation, under Commissioner and Agency Reports. And also, I would like to add Deputy Administrator Nygaard to report on the NLC meeting on 6.4. Is there a conflict of interest to declare at this time?
There were more changes.
Oh, you've got more changes?
I do. Can I pull AM number 25-12 and AM number 25-13?
Attorney Wells, would you, I think we talked about a possible very minor amendment to Resolution 2512. Should that be pulled as well? From the consent agenda for amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Was that one of the AMs that was just pulled?
Yeah. No, no, no. 2512 was. The resolution was.
Oh.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. 2512, 2513.
That one was 2512, right?
Okay. Is there any others?
Could you just clarify all the changes that were made?
Through the chair, to Councilmember Crafton, under Commission and Agency Reports, the Finance Director will just give a brief update on today's contract negotiations as referenced in the Court's Report. And then Deputy Administrator Nygaard will report on the conference recently attended National League of Cities. From the consent agenda, move two new businesses, Resolution Serial Number 2512, AM number 2512, and AM number 2513. And the executive session has been strict, there's no reason to go in.
Thank you.
No conflicts of interest? Are there other changes to the agenda? Hearing none. The agenda is approved as amended. Special orders of the day. It is a proclamation. Recognizing Education and Sharing Day. City of Wassila proclamation recognizing education and sharing day. Whereas, education is the foundation for the success of our state, nation, and society. And the city of Wassila is dedicated to promoting growth through learning and community sharing. And whereas, education should not only impart knowledge, but also cultivate moral and ethical values, empowering individuals to lead purposeful lives and contribute positively to society. And whereas, the Rebbe Rabbi Mechem Schnizerson, a global spiritual and saintly leader, has always championed the vision that education must emphasize morality and ethics alongside academic achievement, guiding students to live meaningful lives of integrity and responsibility. And whereas, the Rebbe's teachings stress that true education nurtures characters, inspiring unity among diverse communities through acts of goodness and kindness, and reinforcing the belief that even one positive action can change the world and promote global peace. And whereas, April 9th, 2025 marks the Rebbe's 123rd birthday and the beginning of the 75th anniversary of his leadership of the Shabad Levavitch movement, which continues to guide communities worldwide with values rooted in the seven Noah laws, universal ethical principles that promotes morality and harmony among all people. And whereas, Shabad is an acronym for three Hebrew words, wisdom, understanding, and knowledge, representing the intellectual and spiritual foundations of education. Levavitch means city of love, reflects the movement's emphasis on love of wisdom, love of humanity, and love of the Creator, embodying the essence of education at its best. And whereas, Education and Sharing Day is observed annually on the Rebbe's birthday to honor his enduring contributions to education, morality, and charity worldwide, celebrating his vision of education that inspires moral character and ethical living. Now therefore I, Mayor Glendy Ledford, Mayor of the City of Wassila, do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2025, as Education and Sharing Day in the City of Wassila and call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future for all, dated this 24th day of March, 2025. And Rabbi Greensberg?
How are you today?
Very well, how are you?
Good. I apologize if I botched names.
Did it perfect? Couldn't be better.
All right. Thank you. Absolutely.
And, or is it on?
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, and to all council members for this honor. With this proclamation, Wassila proudly joins the presidents for almost 50 years, governors, hundreds of mayors throughout the United States and throughout the world, to designate the Rebbe's birthday, as we just heard, which is always celebrated four days before Passover as Education and Sharing Day, in tribute to his outstanding dedication to education. The Rebbe teaches that education in general should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for our career. Instead, educational systems should pay more attention, indeed domain attention, to the building of character with emphasis on moral and ethical values. The Rebbe emphasizes that every individual, and in fact, every individual action, has an impact on the entire universe, and instills the hope for a brighter future into the lives of countless people and across, countless people and across the globe. Since 1978, the U.S. Congress has designated Education and Sharing Day on the Rebbe's birthday as a time to pause and recognize our responsibility to ensure that our young people have the foundations necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment. Education and Sharing Day is about creating conversations. It's about the conversations we have with our children around the dinner table, the conversations we have with our students in the classrooms, the conversations we have day in and day out that can have an impact on the hearts and minds of our young ones. The Rebbe teaches that in truth, every person is an educator. We must all, we must be all mindful of our ability to impact the lives of others. In the Matsu Valley, all the public schools begin the day with 60 seconds of quiet, a moment in which neither teachers nor administrators instruct students on what to do. It is simply a time of silence. This presents valuable opportunity for parents to discuss with their children how to use that moment meaningfully. At the start of the day, when minds and hearts are fresh, what thoughts should they focus on? How can they set a positive time, a tone for the day ahead? These discussions help lay a foundation for children's studies, interactions, and personal growth. The Rebbe emphasizes that the key to moral and ethical behavior is instilling in students the awareness that there is an eye that sees and ear that hears, the Creator and Master of the Universe, who watches over each individual and cares about their thoughts, words, and actions. This understanding reassures children that they are never alone and encourages them to act with kindness, responsibility, and integrity. By beginning the day with these thoughts, students are more likely to make better choices, speak with sensitivity, and treat others with compassion. People are more influenced by things they do than the knowledge they are taught. Therefore, beyond the conversations, it is important to promote these ideas through action. In 1974, the Rebbe introduced the charity campaign. This was not a fundraiser for a specific cause or a call for philanthropists to write out big checks. Instead, it was a grassroots campaign to train us all to become givers. The idea is simple. Set aside a box in your home or in your office as a charity box, and start off the day with giving a small amount to charity. Children should have their own charity boxes and should be encouraged to give charity daily. This will educate them to have an empathy and care for others. The catch is to do this on a consistent basis. Beyond the value of the accumulated charity money benefiting worthy causes, the hand becomes a giving hand, and one becomes a giver as a result. Although April 9th has been set aside as Education and Sharing Day, its theme and message is relevant every day of the year. Even today, let us reflect on our collective obligation and opportunity to enhance true education of our children, to serve as proper role models, and to take concrete action to bring more goodness and kindness into the world. This year marks 75 years of the Rebbe's loving leadership. Seventy-five years of guiding, inspiring, and uplifting people of all backgrounds. His vision shapes lives, his influence grows, and his revolution of goodness continues to change the world. A force of moral clarity, he teaches that each person has the power and responsibility to bring goodness into the world. As we reflect on his leadership, we honor not just a milestone, but a call to live by his teachings, spread kindness, and strengthen society's moral foundation. May God bless your efforts to make brighter future for everyone here in our city, here in Wassila, and beyond, and may the merit of your crucial work welcomes God's blessings in your personal life as well for good health, success, and happiness. And may our collective efforts to perfect the world and make it a place of goodness and godliness hasten the arrival of the ultimate redemption through the coming of Mashiach speedily in our days. Amen. And I have a gift for each one of you, as I have done in previous years, a special little charity box called ARC, which stands for Acts of Routine Kindness, and I'll give it to each one of you as a gift to celebrate education and sharing day. Thank you.
Oh, you have one, okay.
Be happy to get Councilman Johnson's to him if you'd like to leave one for him.
Sure. My honor.
You're welcome.
It's you?
I have one.
Your honor.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Rabbi. We will now hear from the Recreational Services Director on the Parks and Rec Commission Meeting.
Good evening. Scott Bell, Recreational Services Director. We had a Park and Rec Commission Meeting on March 24th, and at that time, I had reported our Music in the Park Program will be back again this summer. It will be starting in June, all Saturdays from 3:00 to 9:00 P.M., and we'll again do a Fourth of July finale. Cleanup Days will be the week of May 5th through the 10th, with our dumpster available on May 10th only this year. Where in the past, it's been in the Iditar Park parking lot, but we don't have the opportunity to really man it, so we're going to do all our collection on that Saturday, the 10th. And the Mayor's Picnic, Fourth of July Picnic, and the Fourth of July Parade are ago, are in planning stages now. During the meeting, Commissioner Jones prepared a proposal, kind of a marketing plan for updating the park master plan, and so an IM will be coming to you guys very shortly, so you'll kind of see what they're looking at doing and how to move forward. Director Shaw had reported on the future direction of Nunley Park and Lake Lucille Park, and that the designs will be coming forward to the commission soon. And the commission is very in favor of and supporting getting these designs presented so that we can kind of get all this going forward and make some progress in the parks. And our next meeting will be May 14th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question of Mr. Bell?
You, you have one question.
Mr. Bell, you mentioned that Cleanup Days, it's May 5th through the 10th. I know we've traditionally just had one dumpster, sometimes we filled it, overfilled it at Iditar Park, and we've talked in the past about perhaps being able to get a contractor to go through the streets and pick up things that the citizens have put on the curb.
Right.
In bags. Do you have any idea what it would cost to have a contractor do that? I'm not saying do away with the dumpster, but I am saying that there's a lot of people that just won't go to Iditar Park, but they would put it on the street if somebody would pick it up.
I don't have any financial proposals for that.
Thank you. We will now hear from the City Planner on the Planning Commission Meeting.
Good evening. This is Cindy Wellman, City Planner, and I have a real brief update this evening. We had our most recent Wassila Planning Commission Meeting on March 11th, in which it was a somewhat light agenda. I gave a report about the things going on in the office, though, and would like to make that a regular feature. And, but, coming up tomorrow night at our March 25th Planning Commission Meeting, we have our, we have our next part of our training, which is the quasi-judicial and commission roles with the city attorney, and then for parliamentary procedure with the city clerk and city attorney. So feel free to come by tomorrow, or we'll have that, of course, recorded, you can watch. And I believe that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from the Wassila High School Student Representative. Please come forward and provide your name and report.
Hi, I'm Allison Devine, and I'm the student body president of Wassila High. First, we had, our Warrior Hockey Team got the ASAA Academic Award and Sportsmanship Award. And at ASAA World Language Declaration, Mia Knox got first place in the Poetry Spanish One and the Monologue Spanish One competition. Zaylor James got first place in the Spanish Three Poetry. And Colleen Howard got first place in Spanish Four Poetry. Our Boys Basketball Team won the Northern Lights Conference Championship, and our basketball cheer also got first at the Northern Lights Championship. Our basketball cheer got the ASAA Academic Award. The Boys Basketball Team got the ASAA Sportsmanship Award. And our girls were second place at State and got the academic award as well. And that's all I have for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tell them all that we said congratulations.
I will.
And now, Cassie, our Finance Director, will give her report.
I'm Cassie Olin, Director of Finance. So today, from 10:00 a.m. till about 3:30 P.M., we met with WPDA Association to go over negotiation. This is our first meeting that we've had for the current year. We went over ground rules for a little while, designated some spokespersons, and went through that process and signed off on it. We exchanged our initial proposals, different articles that we wished to open or wished to have a discussion about. Each side went over each of our discussions and the changes that we'd like to see made, kind of went over discussion, asked questions, things of that nature, just to find out why and how and what and everything along those lines. And then, the remainder of the afternoon, we went back to our kind of areas. We did a caucus, and we went over the proposals, did some analysis, and did some research for legalities and Department of Labor laws and things of that nature. We met back up, and we are proposing right now to meet April 16th, from 9:00 to 3:00 would be our next meeting, at which point in time we will have possibly some agreements, articles to TA, and also to get through the process. So it's, it's beginning to start. And during that time, in the next couple of weeks, I'll be doing a bunch of financial modeling in regards to the requests, to see where we're at and everything along those lines. So that's everything I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we will have a report from the National League of Cities Conference we attended with Deputy Administrator Nygaard.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So we attended the National League of Cities in Washington, D.C. this last few weeks, and much like Alaska Municipal League, they have three different conferences every year. So in the springtime, it's really meeting your delegates within agencies, and then they have a summer city type of, it's more regional, and then in the fall, they have, you know, what really happened this year. So there was 3,000 participants from Alaska, the city of Soldatna, Anchorage, Kodiak, and Wassila were able to attend, and it's my understanding that those cities attend on a regular basis. We were able to meet with our delegation back there with Representative Baggage, Murkowski, and Appropriations Committee, specifically about our airport runway expansion, our water and wastewater. And the delegation is really enthusiastic about the strategic value that our airport can offer to the state. In fact, Senator Murkowski highlighted that the importance of moving this airport forward, she said, despite the construction and maybe debt, it's really going to play a big role in the future role in resource development projects. We were also able to meet with the FAA Headquarters and the Senate Appropriation Meeting, and what came out of that is there's just a lot of uncertainty right now as far as how the CBAs, if there's going to be any at all. But FAA was quite pleased with our master plan and how we progressed. They actually encouraged us to apply for this pilot project that they have for runway expansions. They said, you have growth, you guys have a plan, you need to move this thing forward. And then the last thing I wanted to share is with the Senate Appropriation Committee, we talked about our water and our wastewater, and they noted that the revolving loan fund that they have with the states is one of those funds that they continue to support because the state knows better than they do where the priorities should go. And so our Public Works Department has already been working with DEC on making sure our paperwork's in for the revolving loan for the water and wastewater projects. And this would include like the legacy project for the septic tank removals around Lake Lucille. So we are already hearing from some of those meetings that we had, like FAA Headquarters, they've already reached out to our staff, and we're hearing some really good things. So thank you guys for your support in letting us go to that.
Thank you. And I will add to that, J.D. Vance was the keynote speaker, so. Just saying.
He's too young for you, ma'am.
I know he is. Don't hurt to look. But, you know, a lot of the people that we talked to, they're, everybody is like, okay, what's going to happen? Nobody knows at this time. Everybody's, it's not just us, it's nationwide, what's going to happen? They're waiting to see. But Senator Murkowski did say, even though in '25 there won't be any earmarks, that all they're doing is, she feels like all they're, that all President Trump is doing is restructuring to see where the money is, where it's gone, and what, finding out all of this, and there will be earmarks coming in '26. And she said, make sure, I know we've got your priority list and whatever, but make sure you keep it in there, you keep it updated, because we feel like that there will be earmarks in '26. So instead of July date, like the end of our year, theirs is October, so we're, we're pretty hopeful about that, that we will, there's still money in there. They just need to figure out all of their positions, you know? So it's like us going through budget. But it was, I felt like it was a very, since this is the first time I, our crystal, has ever been to the National League of Cities, I feel like it was very, very useful, and the information that we've gotten and whatever, and of course, meeting with our federal delegation is always a very useful thing. And Murkowski said, oh, I'm so glad to see you guys. You're refreshing to come in. You never have your hand out, you show us what you've really done with the money. So we're in a good position. But anyway, okay, moving on. Public participation, public hearing. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number 25-07 by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by accepting and appropriating an agreement for a subgrant by the Matanus Kusitina Borough from the State of Alaska Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development, Division of Community and Regional Affairs, designated legislative grant in the amount of $2 million for the Palmer Wassila Water Interconnect, Grant Number 25DC082.
Okay. The public hearing on ordinance serial number 25-07 is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Seeing no one? David? I will close public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 25-07?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance 2507.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, seconded.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Vlog to adopt ordinance serial number 25-07. Is there a discussion?
Designated Legislative Grant in the Amount of $2 Million for the Palmer Wasilla Water Interconnect, Grant Number 25 DC 082.
Okay, the public hearing on ordinance serial number 25-07 is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Seeing no one, David. I will close public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 25-07?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance 25-07.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second it.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Vlog to adopt ordinance serial number 25-07. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Rubio.
I do want to just propose maybe postponing this since we just got this response from administration for some of my questions and having time just to digest this. I just haven't had that time.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I would just ask, is there any issue with us delaying that? I don't know if the Public Works would need to answer that question. This doesn't mess with any timelines on anything, does it? Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Graham.
I second the motion to postpone till the next city council meeting.
The motion has been made and seconded to postpone until the next council meeting, which is April 14th. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number 25-08 by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by accepting and appropriating grant funds from the Matsu Trails and Parks Foundation in the amount of $37,500 for Lake Lucille Trail improvements.
Public hearing on ordinance serial number 25-08 is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 25-08?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial number 25-08.
Is there a second?
Rubio seconds.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crafton and seconded by Councilmember Rubio to adopt ordinance serial number 25-08. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for finance here. The $12,000 500 match on this is coming from our grant match money, which is, you know, part of the budget. What would be the remainder of that budget item after the $12,500 is taken up?
We currently don't have anything expended out of that budget currently right now. There's, yeah, this is what it was planned for as we had the application in last year when the budget process went through.
Okay, so we'll still have, you know, 20 plus thousand dollars in grant match money is available? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, motion is adopted. We are now on to persons to be heard. And the first one up is Mr. Sterns.
Good evening. My name is Tom Sterns. I'm the Senior Ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. Lot going on. First of all, on the 31st of March, we'll be closed for Sewards Day. And so we can get prepared for all the rest of the stuff that's coming up. And here it is. On the 25th of March tomorrow, we're having a gardening class with Marlene. It starts at 12:45. Then on Saturday, the 29th, we have an indoor yard sale that goes from 9:00 to 4:00. Then, on the 5th of April, we have our Wasilla Community Health and Wellness Fair. That'll be from 8:00 to 12:00. And there'll be all sorts of different medical-type things. And they all cost money, so just be prepared. And then, on the 12th, the next Saturday, we have the Wasi Volunteer Lunch for all our volunteers at Wasi. And then, we have, on the 17th, you have a flyer here, this one, the pink one, where they're going to make fascinators. Now, for the guys here who probably don't have a clue what a fascinator is, a fascinator is a formal headpiece, a style of millinery. Bottom line, it's a hat. And so they're going to make hats. You get to take one home and then you, the other one is going to be auctioned off on the Mother's Day. Tea and Fashion Show, which is on the 10th of May. These are all fundraisers for the Meals on Wheels, which is coming up on the 6th through the 10th. Our auction is on the 6th through the 10th of May. And we're looking for sponsors, people that will sponsor some of these things. And then we are looking at, let's see, and then the Miles for Meals Online Auction, 6 to 10 May. Oh, I did that one already. And then on the 23rd of May is the Memorial Tree Dedication Ceremony, okay? That only takes us through May. Remember, we still have the Fun Run, which is in June. So I know you're all preparing for that, getting ready for that. And I expect all of you to be there. But we need, we are trying to raise this year $100,000 because we don't know where the money's coming from. We don't know if we're going to get the grants that we've had before. We don't know if the state is going to be able to pitch in and give us any money and stuff like that. So we're taking the initiative to start early and to raise as much money as we can. So that's why, and that's why $100,000 is a lot more than we've ever tried to raise before. So we're looking for sponsorships. If you know people in the community that would like to help us, I'm way past my time, aren't I? Or didn't you do it? Anyway, if you have somebody, please give our office a call and we sure could appreciate, we would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sterns. Next up is Paula Nance and Caitlin Espada. Caitlin, you pull up a chair if you'd like.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening. My name is Paula Nance. I'm the Association Executive for the Valley Board of Realtors. Also with us tonight is...
I'm Caitlin Espada, the President of the Valley Board of Realtors.
And our moral support team, Tammy Hansen with First American Title, and our best cheerleader, Jaylen Espada. We're here tonight to inform you that we put in, the Valley Board of Realtors put in a grant application to the National Association of Realtors for a placemaking grant. This placemaking grant is led only on the basis that it is accomplished on public lands. So driving by Nunley Park and in speaking with the mayor as well as Crystal at one of our meetings, determined that this was a perfect opportunity for us to apply for this $7,500 placemaking grant. So in coordination with Crystal and other city staff, we were able to receive the support documentation necessary and we're pleased to announce that we got it. So we're looking forward to partnering with the city. This is an annual grant that becomes available to us, in my opinion, as the Association Executive. When our members pay their dues, a third goes to the National Association of Realtors. A third goes to the State Association. And a third is kept here locally. By applying for these grants, we simply are getting local dollars back into our community that our members have paid in their dues. And it's a great way to express our support of improvements to the city park as well. Caitlin, do you have anything else you would like to add?
No.
Okay. That's it? Any questions? Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula. And we truly appreciate the Valley Board of Realtors in partnering with us. Next up is David Wilson, Senator Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here, my name is David Wilson, city resident, but I'm here as a map to Health Directors, Director of Public Policy, with an exciting announcement that you guys are the first in the community to hear. So, as you guys know, after 16 years of remarkable dedication of years of service, Elizabeth Ripley, our CEO and President, has stepped me down from her role effective April 30th. Elizabeth's tenure has been marked by transformative leadership, guiding the organization through exponential periods of growth change, through a global pandemic, and a regional population boom. Under the stewardship, the Matsu Health Foundation established its valuable, itself as a valuable community partner, a mission-driven nonprofit funder, and a policy and advocacy ally for the Matsu Valley. The Matsu Health Foundation's Board of Directors approached this new search for a CEO with due diligence and intentionality and through ongoing feedback loops. The board was guided by the voices that would be impacted the most by its mission to help improve the health and wellness of Alaskans living in the Matsu. This empowered the board to identify candidates through each stage, appropriately centering their priorities and expressed by the stakeholder groups. And the search was national, engaging with local, state, and lower 48 candidates. And through the regular screening process, through multiple interviews, the board was able to select a new CEO. And you guys are all probably wondering who the CEO is. So with that, the confidence of the Board of Directors welcomes Esther Pitts as our new President and CEO of the Matsu Health Foundation. She's currently the Chief Community Impact Officer at the Matsu Health Foundation. Esther brings a wealth of experience in healthcare administration, management, and as into this new position as CEO. Esther's commitment to innovation, sustainability, and stakeholder engagement and valued evidence and time through the Matsu Health Foundation and through the interview process. She is rooted in the Matsu community, having more than 30 years of experience, 30 years calling Alaska our home and leadership in the healthcare industry. She brings, her ability to guide this organization has further contributed to the outstanding success in the search, and we're excited on the expansive journey. As you may know, Matsu Health Foundation owns shares in Matsu Hospital here in this capacity of the board and the governance to help protect. This healthcare institution is very important. The Matsu Healthcare, the Matsu Regional Medical Center and the community health systems, which co-own the hospital, are elevated, are enlightened to continue to see Esther grow these opportunities and for a healthier Matsu for all. As we celebrate Elizabeth's remarkable tenure and transition to retirement, it's with our deepest gratitude for this transmission, this transformative leadership. We are thankful for her service, but we also warmly welcome Esther Pitts as our new CEO. And we're confident under her leadership that we'll grow and thrive and make profound impact into the health and wellbeing of Matsu residents. And the Matsu Health Foundation is planning, is prepared, and planning a smooth transition. And the board, Elizabeth and Esther, are actively engaged in the successful planning, succession planning. And please don't hesitate to reach out if you guys have any questions. And we look forward to setting up meetings with our new CEO when she takes effect at May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that is persons to be heard. I will close persons to be heard and move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the items for approval under the consent agenda by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two sets of city council meeting minutes. The first, special meeting minutes, March 3rd, 2025. Regular meeting minutes, March 10th, 2025. We have two introductions, recommended public hearing date, April 14th, 2025. The first is ordinance serial number 2510, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by transferring $300,000 from the general fund to the airport property acquisition fund for the purchase, for the purpose of property purchases related to airport runway extension. Second is ordinance serial number 2511, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by transferring $75,000 from the general fund to the sewer repair and maintenance fund for the purpose of unanticipated equipment repairs. A M's for approval under our consent agenda, A M number 2509, award of a three-year contract to Premier Janitorial Services in the amount of $139,500 for janitorial services at the Wasilla Police Department. A M number 2510, contract award to Valley Business Machines in the amount of $53,850 for citywide copier printer rentals. A M number 2511, contract award to Alaska Rotek in the amount of $42,376 for sewer effluent pumps. And lastly, A M number 2515, authorizing agreement and payment to Sioux Connect Wetland Mitigation Bank in the amount of $97,350 for required wetland mitigation credits related to wastewater treatment plant, W W T P improvements. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Mayor, if I can, I have one question. Can I ask a question? No? Okay. She can. She can, because it's the consent.
Is it?
Or you can have her move it. I just have a question on the two ordinance.
What ordinance number?
2510 and 2511.
Okay.
I'm just reading them. They both say transferring on the funds. And it's actually appropriating. It's a budget adjustment, not a transfer, if I'm reading correctly. On the backside of 2510, if you read the purpose on section two, it does say by appropriating $300,000 for the general fund. So I'm just confused. And that's all. I had a question for you.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Through the chair to the attorney. I guess we can retitle them for the public hearing? Or do I need to run them back through?
I think you can, you can retitle them for the public hearing. I don't think that's, you can retitle them without...
Okay, and we'll work with, we'll work with departments to be mindful.
I mean, I just would, do we need an adise to read them and make sure that the retitling is necessary or appropriate? I just have...
Yes. Yeah.
I'd like a five-minute adise so we can kind of sort this out.
Okay.
6:48 adise. We'll be back at 6:53.
Like transferring from the title, put appropriating, so it basically matches the per- the purpose section of the ordinance. So I think it would read, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget by appropriating three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to the airport fund for the per- for the purpose of property purchases related to airport runway extension. And I, I think it's because the money has not been, it's not budgeted, it's not been appropriated, it's in the savings account, is that correct? If you will, the general fund fund balance. So, I don't think we need, I think it's fine, we'll just retitle it through the public hearing, and then when it's finalized, it will read that way. That works for the body.
And twenty-five-eleven.
And the same, I think, with twenty-five-eleven. We will make any adjustments to the title.
I don't need.
Required. Does that work?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we are on.
To the motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Would it be as amended? Or we're not amending it right now, so I, I moved the consent agenda as read.
Rubio, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crafton and segmented by Councilmember Rubio to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there objection to the motion? There are none, the motion is approved. There is no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move directly to new business. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the first item.
Thank you, am number twenty-five-fourteen, discussion, consideration, and action on the process to appoint the city attorney.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Hmm?
Through the chair, may I?
Yes.
So I guess there was two options presented in the am, so I would just request that the maker of the motion, um, select which option they want to move.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion on am twenty-five-dash-twelve? Ms. Rubio?
Yes, sorry. Is there a motion, is that what you just asked? Sorry, I was trying to get it myself. Yes.
I need you to write the motion.
Do you want me to read them, the options?
Yes.
Through the chair to the council, may I read the options? So my suggested motions, you can, you know, the council, so two options were on, the first one would be, I move to authorize the purchasing officer to enter into contract negotiations with Birch Horton, Bittner, and Sherlo under the sole source, uh, contracting provision in W M C five oh eight one forty, and to add an evaluation process to the contract, or alternatively, somebody could move to authorize the purchasing officer to issue an R F P for general legal counsel services, um, with the contract awarded, uh, presented to council for approval pursuant to Wasilla Municipal Code five oh eight oh seven oh, and of course, the, the firm presented would be the highest ranking firm. So there's two, two different options, or, or different options.
Okay. Is?
Madam Mayor, I do. I like the first option, I move to authorize the purchasing, uh, officer to enter contract negotiation with Birch Horton. I don't know if I need to read it all. Bittner and Sherlo, do I need to read it all? Under the sole source contacting provision in W M C five dot oh eight dot one four oh, and to add an evaluation process to the contract.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, a second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Rubio and segmented by Councilmember Cottle to approve am number twenty-five-dash-fourteen. Madam Clerk, please provide a report.
Um, report, um, no. I, I think, oh, oh, I think that was maybe.
You are.
Yep. Okay. Unless there's particular questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Graham?
If I can.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk and Madam Mayor. Um, so the first option is, uh, sole source, uh, to one firm, obviously, and the second option invites, uh, discussion, uh, and bidding between different firms, which is what we've done, uh, you know, for, a- as long as I can remember, twenty-plus years here in the city. I, 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 for one, am kind of uncomfortable with the sole source, because I don't really understand, uh, the comparison. I mean, why are we going to a sole source? Would be my question, as opposed to, I mean, obviously, this came from somewhere and somebody did some research, so why would we go to sole source? We mentioned over here that several different municipalities or towns and cities, you know, uh, use, uh, sole source. I, I'm just kind of curious what research went into this, and have the cities that have gone to sole source, uh, contracting, have they been satisfied that, that the scoring process that's used under the R F P would make the sole source contract the number one person if they, if they go to sole source?
Madam Clerk?
Through the chair to the council, I think really, uh, I didn't quite go down that path, but I, I think, and I could be wrong, I think for me, if I were advising the council, you really have two choices as outlined in the first, second, third, fourth, does it? So under our current model, if you go out to R F P, you have Finance Director, correct me if I'm wrong, you have three, you enter into a three-year contract under the contracting provisions, and potentially, if you go out to R F P, every six years, you could be turning over a new attorney. And we saw that, we've seen that almost every year, if you go back to the records, we have a new attorney every six years. That's really the question, does that make sense? Um, the, the municipalities that I contacted directly that do not have in-house attorneys, uh, one of them said absolutely not, we don't go through the art, you know, our, our F P process, because it doesn't make sense to have an attorney every six years, so it's not based solely on that. Others said, it's been so long, I really don't know how we've done it. So that's the bottom line.
I could follow up. So if you go with sole source, it doesn't mention, uh, a term of the contract here. Am I missing something? I mean, whereas, if you go to the R F P, it's three years with some options for extensions, but the sole source doesn't, doesn't mention that.
Be flushed out, at least in my mind, and Finance Director Cassie, please correct me if I'm wrong. I feel like that's kind of under the contract negotiations, and I feel like if the council did want to go to the sole source provision where we, we, I thought that annual evaluation process was something important to add in, so you could have the dialogue, is the attorney's, is the firm meeting our needs? Is it not meeting our needs? And I imagine every contract has some sort of out, every city contract, whether it's six years, ten years, but.
This is just a, and I, I don't know how appropriate it is for me to weigh in, but I, council and administration need to know, you can fire your attorney at any time. It's our ethical obligation, so you, you can always, we write, we have these contracts, and this applies to both methods, you know, we have these contracts, we have terms that, that is for the protection of the city, this, the lawyer cannot leave you at any time. Um, we can, you know, we're subject to the terms of the agreement and other provisions, but council and the city can always be like, this is not working out, and you're not married to the same term. It's a great deal in that sense, but it applies regardless of, you know, the, the method you use.
If I may, um, I think that, um, in six years, it takes three years for them to really get to know the city, how we work, how things are done, and whatever. And personally, I think if, uh, we go to the sole source, then we get a better attorney, because they're not continuing to learn of how we do this or that or whatever. And I know, uh, the law is the law, I get that, but if we.
This has been a meeting.
If we have the same attorney longer than six years, I think we get a better product for our money. Because you, when you are sending it to R F P, are you, you are choosing that firm based on dollars.
May I say something?
Yes.
Also, Finance Director Olin, please correct me if I'm wrong, that, even if we go to the sole source, source model, that is, the contract will come back before council, so you'll see the terms. It's not just a blanket, and that, at that point, you know, maybe you will agree or won't agree with the terms of that contract.
And our contracts that do have a three-year contract, um, such as like our premier, like our janitorial that you've seen the last couple of meetings, each and every one of those next contracts for twenty-seven will come back again here coming up in like April, May, or June. This part's just the first part of the R F P process, and then our contracts, once we negotiate with, uh, the current vendors that we have, then, um, the purchasing contractor brings it forward again to for approval for the next year's budget.
Uh, Ms. Rubio?
I did make that motion, and I love hearing the mayor say this too. The, the sole source, I, I like using something that is a constant, because they've, you know, got up to their knees with information in six years, and we don't want to start back at our feet. So I think that's a great thing. The other thing that I love about this is that we add that evaluation process. So, uh, it gives us that blanket to go, hey, we're not happy with who we have right now. You know, the evaluation came back negative, then we can end that. And that's why I made that motion as the, as the first.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, kind of a blunt way I've been thinking about this is, are we happy with the services we're providing? Or are we wanting to open the door to have somebody new? That, that's the way I've been thinking about this one here. And like Holly said, we have the right to, we can fire you in the next meeting if we're not happy, if, if something that serious came along, is kind of what I've been thinking about. Um, and even though we do have this, with this process, I think even if we have the evaluation one, I, I, like you said, it, it really, it's, hey, if something just completely goes sideways and things aren't working out, then we're going to have a conversation like that. I think that would be more so what we're going with. Now, I would like it if we did have something towards the end of every fiscal year where the council has some type of evaluation, so we can all have a collective of what our thoughts are on what the last years looked like. Um, so have a little bit more of a formal evaluation, um, on it. I would, I would like that just going forward, I think that'd be a great process, regardless of if we end up changing one day and going back to the R F P process. I mean, it's not to say that we can't, you know, this time next year, we could go, man, this was a bad idea, it looks like we're gonna, we're gonna change. I think that door's open. My only thought, and this is just maybe something putting out there, is, and, and I know we have a bit of an ebb and flow when it comes to what, how busy the city is this last two years, I would probably say, and this year have been pretty heavy on ordinance style. Our ordinances, um, is sometimes the timeliness of stuff coming forward. And so I think just a food for thought, um, in, I'm, I'm happy with the services we've received from Holly. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm for going with, uh, this process here, but just over, over the, my time here, I know sometimes with Title sixteen, things have gotten weighed down, things have been slower to get around, uh, but overall, I know that's not always going to be the case, but there's other times well, as well, once we finish the comprehensive plan, I believe, Crystal, we're working on, we could be back, and back elbow deep in Title, Title sixteen again, depending on what that comes back on. Maybe not the entirety of it, but I know a good chunk of it could be redone. So I'm for sticking with, uh, option one, I guess we'll call it right now, that we've, that's on the table.
Further discussion?
Kathy?
Madam Mayor, um, I like the sole sourcing for one of the points of, you know, if we like the service we're getting, we like who we have, I don't want to have to train up another attorney. And it, you know, and I guess in my mind, if it's not broke, don't fix it, and I like to be able to stay with the consistency, to have, you know, keep an attorney in an attorney's firm that has the history with us, knows the ins and outs, instead of having to keep starting over. And then it is based so much on just the dollar amount. Um, I, I think if, if we feel like we're getting, um, quality service now, I wouldn't want to change that. I like the idea of, of doing an evaluation, and, you know, thank you, Holly, for bringing up that maybe you can't fire us, but we can fire you if we're not happy, and, and, you know, that kind of gives us that, that, um, that leeway in there, so I definitely do support the single source.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, I too support the single source, but, you know, one of the things here is we're talking about the process to appoint the city attorney. So I know when we go to an R F P, we get three years, and it comes back, and it says it's going to be, you know, two forty-five an hour, two fifty an hour, two sixty an hour. It kind of spells out those three years. So would the sole source negotiations be that same thing? And give us a multi-year, uh, relatively fixed rate? Or, or could they come in at, you know, two fifty this year, and then we go back next year in the interest of continuity, and they say, well, now it's two ninety-five, or? And, and I know those numbers are just, uh, out of nowhere, but.
Correct, they can, they would not have a multi-year. Um, it would be a year-by-year basis, basically, it becomes a, a year-to-year contract over time, is kind of what it would be, so it could, yeah, and.
Thank you.
Through the chair, to the, but wouldn't it, correct me if I'm wrong, Cassie, it comes back to you, I guess, would be every year?
Correct.
Yeah, and so you would see that, I would assume the purchasing officer would say, you know, we entered back into negotiations, or, and, um, the rates increased by this, and if, you know.
And we currently do have contracts that are current, some contracts that we have gone out are in a multi-year, three-year contract, and we have other contracts that are done, negotiated year by year. So it just depends on how we write the R F P and how we go about initiating that negotiations. Um, I have been more stringent with the purchasing, uh, officer to do more three-year because of the budgeting and things that helps us along the way, so that we can get out ahead of some of the budget estimates and things of that nature, and we can have some savings along the way. So we, we're trying to go to that route. And then your, uh, optional two years, basically, are two new years that would be negotiated, each of those years would be, which is kind of some of the ending ones that we've seen lately.
Yes, further discussion. Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted to do a, what is it? Purchase an officer to enter contract negotiation with Birch, Horton, Vittner, and Sherat, or Sherit, whatever, under the sole source contracting provisions. So, okay, moving on. Madam Clerk, next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Next, it kind of goes with two of them. First, that was the formality resolution serial number 2511, accepting the resignation of Councilmember Timothy V. Johnson and declaring Council Seat C vacant as of March 25, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move Resolution Serial Number 2511.
Is there a second?
Rubio, second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Rubio to adopt Resolution Serial Number 2511. Is there discussion? Mr. Graham.
So, you know, Tim and I have been friends since before he's been on the council. I think he's served us well, you know, as, on both sides of the issue. You know, he's a very technical guy, which has helped us out on several occasions. And he has given us a different point of view on a lot of different things there. I am sorry to see him go, but I understand his personal situation is such that continuing to serve on the council is not in the best interest of the city. And I urge us to accept his resignation.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, next item.
Thank you. It's AM number 2516, approving the process to fill vacant Council Seat C.
Is there a motion to adopt AM number 2516?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve AM number 2516.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second it.
It's been moved by Councilmember Cottle and seconded by Councilmember Belloc to approve AM number 2516. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. This, probably to our clerk here, is this the process that we've put in the last couple of times that we've, or the process that we discussed utilizing the last couple of times? Like, for instance, when Ms. Cottle was appointed. This was the process discussed, but not utilized, correct?
Yes. Through the chair to Councilmember Crafton. Absolutely. So I, I would love for the council to really pay attention to page two of the AM interview and selection process. Because unless amended, if you guys agree, I would like to use that process. So interviews will be conducted during a regular council meeting on April 28. Following the interviews, the council will take a straw poll to narrow down the field of candidates, depending on how many we have. Straw poll will be taken through a ballot provided by the clerk. Straw poll will be counted using a point system. The first choice candidate will receive three points, second choice, two points, third choice, one point. The clerk, the deputy, and the attorney will tally the results and announce them through a motion and affirmative vote. The candidate who receives the most votes in the straw poll will be appointed to Council Seat C. And then the appointee then will serve until a successor is elected at the October election.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have an issue with the way the straw poll works. You know, the way the city council works is you need four votes, pretty much to move anything forward, you know. So to get a majority of the council, should say a majority of the council seats, you need four votes. So even like when there's only five of us here tonight, if we're going to move anything, it takes four votes. You know, if there's six of us here, it still takes four votes. So, but what we've got here, this straw poll counting system, you know, first choice candidate, three points, second choice, two points, third choice will receive one point. So the way I see it is Ms. Belloc would have a ballot in front of her, and she would decide on her ballot who gets three points, who gets two points, who gets one. And each of us would do that. And then the last bullet here, it says the candidate who receives the most votes in the straw poll will be appointed to Council Seat C. And that doesn't mean you had four people. You know, it doesn't mean you had four votes moving to seat that person. And this takes away, that last bullet there seems to me to take away the ability for the council to say, you know, we've got a split decision here that we need to figure out. We need to have four people say that this person should be appointed. And that's not, that's not what this says at that time. It just says, "Well, whoever gets the most points is going to be elected," and it's not a big deal because they have to get reelected in October.
Yes. No, sir, Councilmember Graham, I apologize, and you are correct. That's not what I meant. I left out certainly any action the council takes. It's my understanding per Code Four affirmative vote. So I guess this was kind of the, whoever, you know, you would all agree on the process, and so honor that because the first place person got the highest ranking of points, that that would be the name moved and then appointed. But you are right. It doesn't, you're not bound to, you're free to vote how you choose to vote. It's just a way to try to get somebody in the seat without continued split votes, which I have seen, to try to get to four. But it's up to you.
Also, could we perhaps change that fourth bullet there? It says, you know, that this person will be appointed, this person will be brought to the council in a motion to appoint them or something.
Well, it says that through a motion and affirmative vote.
Right, but, okay.
But we can do it however you want.
Ms. Belloc.
Yeah. So now the way this reads, it's pretty much ranked choice voting is what it is. And I was thinking we had issues last time when we did kind of do that before because someone could use the ranked choice voting to try to get the person they want by, you know, it can be manipulated, just like we see in the big, in the big leagues. But, yes, I didn't think we chose to do it this way, but maybe I'm not remembering it right. Because I decided, I think we didn't like the ranked choice voting stuff because we kind of experienced it a little bit in our, when we were handling Kathy there.
Well, through the chair to the council, I can't really, we were in executive session, so I'm not privy to discuss what all went on. But certainly, once a name is brought forward, now in, in the old days, I guess, you're also just free to move, have the interviews, close the interviews, and move the first person out of the chute, make the motion to appoint X, and keep doing it till you get to four. I'm, I'm, City Attorney, do you have anything to weigh in?
The only thing I would say is we could change it so that it says the most, through a motion affirmative vote, the candidate who receives the most votes will be appointed to Council Seat C. Eliminate the reference to the straw poll, although council will have that informing their decision so that it reflects what the clerk just said, which is, we're going to go through this process. You will know who your first, second, and third choices are. But per Councilmember Graham, that vote is informed by the straw poll rather than dictated by it. Maybe. I don't know. What do you think?
That works. I mean, absolutely. That works for me. I, I, so Holly, we would just strike straw poll?
Yeah, I think you just strike straw poll.
Well, I guess no, through an affirmative vote.
Most votes strike in the straw poll, in the last bullet.
Madam Mayor, I just want to clarify. So what you're saying is we would still do technically this ranked choice voting system. Once it's determined, we're all then given first place, second place, third place, we'll call it. Somebody makes a motion for the first one. If they get four votes, they're appointed. If they don't get four votes, then we move to the next person. Is that what I'm understanding?
I think, so, and let me make sure if this works, but it's mainly you're going to go through the straw poll, the ranked choice voting, so to speak. And then the, the results will be tallied and announced. And then through a motion and affirmative vote, well, I guess, well, now as I say that, I think it doesn't really work because you're right. You need to have the, you know, you have to have the motion. So even though what the clerk is saying is you have the motion, but you can vote the motion down, right? That you, the council hasn't given up its ability to, and that on all those votes happened with four, four members. And I want to apologize to the city clerk because I think I just caught up to where she was when she.
No, not me. I'm sure I wasn't very eloquent. Do you want to strike everything and just say interviews will be conducted during the regular meeting on April 28? And the candidate who, you know, through a motion and affirmative vote, a candidate will be appointed.
I prefer what the clerk just said based on, you know, I think I probably sat through this thing four or five times over the years. The straw poll thing here, without getting into what's happened in executive session, doesn't mean you're not going to have a tie for first. And it does, it says, "We'll conduct a straw poll." It doesn't talk about multiple straw polls. I don't know. I, I think I agree with what Councilmember Crafton is saying. This is kind of a ranked choice voting issue, which is not, which is not what I think we want. I think what we want is we want to have a discussion of the candidates. And then if there is a, you know, and then polls are done in executive session and a person gets four votes, then they will move forward to the outside of executive session of the council. That would be my preference.
So do you want, ma'am, sorry, I don't mean to be over, do you want to make that motion to strike, to strike, I guess, under that section, strike the second, third, fourth bullets? Was that four? One, two, three, four? And then the fifth bullet would read, through affirmative, through a motion and affirmative vote, a candidate will be appointed to Council Seat C. The appointee will serve until a successor is elected during the October 7, 2025, regular election to complete the remainder of the term.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend whatever this is, 2516, as just stated by the clerk.
Can you repeat that?
Okay, we had a, we've got a motion on the floor. Do we know?
We do, but we're going to amend it.
Okay.
So it's in order. If there's a second.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Crafton to amend AM number 25-16. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Are there further?
That was the amendment, right?
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Did we want to add a bullet in here that we are going to go into executive session so, or have the right to, so that the candidates understand that there's a chance that after they were interviewing them, that we're going to step back into a closed meeting to discuss?
Through the chair to the council, unless the city attorney disagrees with me, I think I will, I will handle that through the, oh, the notification that we put out to candidates. And we also inform them that it's their right to request that it be held in open session. And we're very mindful that there is, we're very limited in how we move into executive session. And so we follow that strictly under the law, as the law provides.
I have a second question, if I could, Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe a question to the rest of the body here. Do we want to conduct this at a regular meeting, or would we prefer a special meeting like we did last time? Because we know that this can take a while, and depending on how much is on our agenda on the 28th, I mean, we could be here for a very long evening that night. So I almost wonder if this would be better to have a special meeting that is specific to that one item in, in my eyes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Belloc.
I, like Councilmember Graham, have been through quite a few. At least it seems like I've probably been through at least three, maybe four. And I have to say that our last one was unusual. It usually does not take that long. Would you agree, Councilmember Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, are we still on 2516?
As amended.
Okay.
Any objection?
Is there an objection to the motion to approve AM serial, AM number 25-16 as amended? Hearing none, the AM 2516 as amended is approved.
Okay.
All right, now, we have still got the others. So, yes, please read.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, do you want to just take these in order, the resolution first and then the two AMs? Okay, so before you is Resolution Serial Number 2512, directing the mayor to immediately halt improvements at Nonley Park, engaging an independent contractor and ensuring community, community, city council, and Parks and Recreation Commission involvement.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move Resolution Serial Number 2512.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
It has been moved by Councilmember Graham, seconded by Councilmember Crafton to approve AM Serial Number 2512. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution that follows up on our action. Will the council, from the last meeting where we decided unanimously that there needs to be a process when we're dealing with city assets like this. The city of Wassila is not on the same, you know, scale as the city of Anchorage, or even the city of Juneau or the city of Fairbanks. We don't have the expertise, the staff expertise that has park planning, things there. We have a Parks and Recreation Commission, which should be engaged in this process and should be the first place to start, rather than starting the process and then informing the commissioner, "Oh, by the way, we're going to, we're going to bring something forward when something's already been started." So what this says is we need to realize our limitations. We get an independent contractor out here in the process. We will make sure that the citizens' input is solicited, make sure the Parks and Recreation Commission is aware of that input. And that input is brought forward through the Parks and Recreation Commission, much like what we would do with the planning commission. There's not much need in having a commission there if we're not going to utilize them. And the reason that they're on there is because they have an interest in the civic good and civic beauty of our, of our town here. So this just follows up with that and says, you know, "Let's quit mowing stuff down without people knowing what's going on out there." So I encourage you to support this. And this, of course, would mean that an independent contractor would be involved for the remodel of Nonley Park. Thank you.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Belloc.
This is not a huge park. And I think, I mean, we have Parks and Rec. I mean, I think our guys are pretty experienced. I don't know. To me, it's not a huge park. I don't know, do we really need to be paying an independent contractor to put, we're going to grade it, and to put some new playground. we're going to grade it, and to put some new playground equipment up? I don't see the need to pay an independent contractor, unless there's just something, I am not seeing, I don't know.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Crafton?
This might be a question for our Public Works, or maybe Parks and Rec, wouldn't this be the process? If we were going to redesign a park, we'd be hiring an outside source to redo the park anyways, or at least conceptualize the design plans for us?
Director Shaw, would you like to come and speak to that?
Eric Shaw, Public Works Director, through the mayor, so the, will the board vote two weeks ago? We heard that loud and clear, public parks are very sensitive, and, you know, the public wants to be involved, and so we've taken steps to reach out to contractors that will provide the illustration for the plan that we've been talking about, so that's easy for the council and the public to see. So I think it makes sense to have support in the form of a consultant that helps design parks, and, you know, makes the illustrations, the design drawings, that would lead into another portion of this resolution that talks about putting it out to bid, so we've started wheels of motion to meet this resolution, should it be supported tonight.
If I could follow up, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and since Eric's still sitting here, there, there's a date here on the 9th of June, I mean, that's two months away, that gives you about two full months to work on this, do you feel like we could complete that in this timeline?
I would appreciate if the resolution talked about 4th of July. What we'd like to be able to do is have a presentation to the public and use 4th of July holiday, when we have extra thousands of people coming to the city, and have a presentation that we can make, because Nunley is going to be very important in the 4th of July parade, but I'd be happy to bring anything before the council, before the 4th of July, if that's the date that the council desires.
Mr. Graham?
Madam Mayor, if I may, when I put together this resolution, pretty much we were just guessing on the timeline, I mean, how much time would Public Works need, how much time would Finance need, so on and so forth, and since we're not allowed to talk directly to the directors, we just had to come up with something and write it down, so. So that's where that came from, if we want to change that number, no objection.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask another question here? So Eric, what you're basically saying is you'd like to have something that we could provide public input to at the 4th of July parade, essentially saying, "Here's what we're thinking, give us some input, we can make changes to it at that point," and then probably, at that point, it'd be maybe the 14th, probably the 28th of July, before we'd have a, like, we'd be finalizing it, is that what you're kind of?
Depending on, um, let me back up, I would like to maybe look at the presentation to the council in the second meeting in June, if we have one, I don't know the calendar off the top of my head, so that the council feels comfortable with making sure that we share what's shown in June at some point to the public, so that the 4th of July can be used as a feedback gathering opportunity. And then depending on the level of feedback, it, it may take a little bit of time to quantify comments, but we definitely want to keep moving.
Dates for you, by the way, 23rd of June is our second meeting, uh, 23rd of June is the second meeting, the following Friday is the 4th of July, and then we have the 14th and the 28th meetings in July. I, I mean, Mr. Graham's okay with that, I feel like that'd be acceptable timelines of seeing if we get some public input at 4th of July, unless he had objection to it.
No objection.
Well, it says no later.
No later, so?
So you want it no later than the 23rd?
Is that what we'd need to do, amend at that point, is just saying, bring a conception, a concept to the council? A complete improvement plan must be submitted by June 9th. Would we just say, "Concept submitted to the council by June 23rd"? Clerk, Madam Clerk?
That would, that would work for me.
The concept? The concept, so strike final and improvement, and insert concept?
Concept plan shall be submitted to the council no later than June 23rd? And that's a motion.
Is there further discussion?
Is there a second to the amendment?
Cottle seconds.
Holly?
I do want to make some, recommend some changes, to make sure that we're being very careful to not govern, one, we have an area of law, we have development plan requirements for our Parks and Recreation Commission, as it stands under the code, we also have authority granted to the mayor for rules and regulations regarding Parks and Recreation, and the use of parks and recreational facilities. So I have some language to propose, just to make sure that this is not interpreted, these directives aren't interpreted to in any way violate the authority granted to the administration, and also the Parks and Rec Commission, and then I have some changes, that just change the reference to the comprehensive develop, uh, comprehensive improvement plan, to call it a development plan, because the Parks and Recreation provisions give the Parks and Rec Commission authority to weigh in on, to, on develop development plans for council's recommendation, and I would prefer to stay with that same language, so we are investing in the creation of development plans for these parks, and so I, if, if, and council wants to discuss that sort of generally first rate, if not, I will give you my specific recommended changes, and then you could discuss whatever works best.
Madam Mayor, I'd like a five-minute recess, so the attorney can make copies of that, so we have it in front of us.
We are in a five-minute recess. Mr. Graham, I want to correct you on one thing.
Is that what you're going for?
Well, is there any objection since the original amendment belongs to the body? Is there any objection to withdrawing? Crafton and Cottle. So that one goes away. No objection.
Yeah, no objection.
So I restate my amendment to Resolution Seal Number 2512 to include the changes made by the city attorney and possession of each of the council members.
Is there a second?
Rubio, seconds.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Rubio to amend AM 2512 to what the attorney has provided. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are back to the main motion. AM 2512.
It's a correction, it's Resolution 2512.
Oh, sorry.
There is an AM 2512 later in the agenda.
Anyway.
A lot of time on all in my desk.
Is... Is there objection to the motion to approve 2512 as amended? Hearing none, it is approved. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next is AM Number 2512, authorizing agreement and reimbursement. And I'm going to vouch this, and I apologize, to Kiwam Saskaken with Basil Ginger in the amount of $107,364.55 for oversized water main costs.
Is there a motion?
Rubio has a motion for AM Number 2512.
Is there a second?
Graham, seconds.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Rubio and seconded by Councilmember Graham. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Rubio.
I pulled this because I'm confused. On page 107, I don't understand how this proposal that Big Dipper has has anything to do with this AM. As we are authorizing an agreement reimbursement, not awarding a contract? That's my first question.
Yes, a further... Mr. Graham?
So I guess my question would be, is this... If we use Big Dipper, is this going to be under the equipment and operator agreement we have? Or is this going to be something that goes out to bid? Where are we at on this? And I'd like the Public Works Director to...
Mr. Graham, you need to direct your comments to me instead of the staff, if you would.
I didn't direct that question to anybody. I just said that was my question, and I said I would like Mr. Shaw to comment.
Your comments need to come through me. Anyway. Director Shaw?
Eric Shaw, Public Works Director. To address both the questions, so this agreement is to allow the city to benefit from expanding the size of the water service that's required for this development, Basil Ginger. So the reason that there is a quote from Big Dipper is because that was the contractor that they selected to receive a quote to do that construction. They use that as the starting point to negotiate the increased costs for enlarging the water line. So we, the process for any developer that is creating a project of such size or connection to our water system that we use code that allows us to have the water main extended for the future benefit of the city, is that they bring us the contractor's agreement that they're setting up themselves. We have the lineal footage of the pipe that they're going to install for their own service, and then we are able to leverage that construction and say, if you're going to install a six-inch pipe, we will upgrade your pipe to a 10 or a 12, depending on what we need for future service. And the city pays the difference in the form of additional material costs. So in that arrangement, in this agreement, we look to that developer to have a cost associated with their work alone, and then the city seeks to add additional funds to buy larger pipe and have that installed. And that function extends the water service into the future for the city. So we would not be signing a contract with Big Dipper. We would be using the contract that Basil Ginger would be signing to identify the cost sharing that the city forms with Basil Ginger. The check would be cut to Basil Ginger, and then Basil Ginger would use their contractor to install it to City Specs, and there's some inspection on the city part, and then the city accepts it as a final completion of the project.
Ms. Rubio.
So again, this is not a contract that Basil Ginger has with Big Dipper. It's not signed. There's a date on it that says 15 days from February 18th. So personally, I don't care who the contractor is that Basil Ginger decides to do business with. What's concerning to me is Basil Ginger has given you or showing us a proposal that they're not under a contract. I'm not going to hand over a check to Basil Ginger for $107,000 in hopes that they have a contractor that's going to cover that. That is doing business completely wrong. And so I do not support this. I would support this AM if Basil Ginger showed us the contract that they have with the contractor that shows that this is the amount they need, and then we cut the check.
Madam Mayor, is it because maybe Basil Ginger wanted us to make sure we're going to do it? They're showing their proposal, so they know, we know the amount? Want to make sure we're going to do our part before they commit to their part and sign that contract? Does that make sense?
I don't know if I can speak on Basil Ginger's part. They have complete, they've started construction, and they won't have any water service to their new facility until they finalize this agreement. So I think that, you know, this project is well underway, and they want to start construction.
Make sure we get our money.
Correct.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
So to clarify, kind of going off what Ms. Rubio said there, is, are, they haven't paid their contractor yet. We're basically footing a portion of the bill. Because if I recall, this is supposed to be a reimbursement, the way that this type of thing is handled, is saying, hey, you guys are on the hook for this cost. And then once it's, everything's done and completed, and we've signed off on it, we are going to then give you the amount that we owe you back for that. Isn't that how this was originally supposed to work?
I would have to double-check with the Finance Director on that exact order. But it is, you know, it's our understanding that the agreement is not made, is not completed until the work is done. So we will be overseeing it as a mainline extension. So we'll be coordinating with the construction. The order of payment, I'm a little less familiar with, because it's, once the agreement's signed...
If I could continue, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm on page 92 of 170, or two, page two of 16 here. It, it, there's the reimbursement to the, to the developer. So it's, it sounds like this is after the work is completed. We've signed off on it. That's when we reimburse them, is what I'm, I'm looking at here. So I mean, I'm not trying to not give them their money. I just see what Ms. Rubio is saying is, they're saying, hey, it's going to cost, what? $270,000? And, oh, by the way, they actually have somebody that's willing to do it for $240,000 or $200,000. Now we just paid for more of the project than what we agreed to. And, I mean, from what I understand, too, we've had discussions with somebody else about a very similar project, and that's what they were told, was you have to, you have to basically foot the bill, and the city of Wasilla will reimburse you for their portion of the project. So I, I mean... Unless they're telling us it's paid, I would have to agree with Ms. Rubio here, unless there's something else that our attorney or our finance tells us differently that we agreed to already.
Cassiel, and Director of Finance, they're the mayor. Mr. Crafton, if you look at, actually, on page 15 of 16, I don't know what that is, I'm sorry, with the big one.
105.
You'll see down there, conditions of reimbursement. So it says here that if this agreement requires the city to reimburse the developer for all part of the cost of an improvement, the reimbursement shall be conditioned upon the developer's performance of all its obligations under this agreement, and upon the successful arrangement of financing through bonds or other means. So what that usually, what happens is, is we require them to provide proof of payment, require the bill has been fully paid off and the invoice submitted to the Finance Office, and then we reimburse the portion of that. They are also required to have, on page 14 of 16, item number 3.04, which is the warranty guarantee deposit. So we also receive a warranty deposit of $27,340 before we allow them to begin any work of any kind on that, before we can do any of the, any of the work begins on that part of it. And once we receive that, then we hold that deposit for two years. And then if something should happen during that time, then there's a whole other process after that. But yes, we will wait for, they will not receive any money until we actually receive full bill invoices, statements that have been paid in full.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, Cassie, us passing this today does not, we're not cutting the check to them tomorrow, right? We're just saying we're agreeing to give you this amount?
Correct, based off of that quote that they received from Big Dipper Construction. But if they choose to go to a different construction company, different person, the maximum amount what we will do is $107,000. Because in this contract, it does not say who the, who the actual construction person would be. It just states that we will reimburse you for this work that you're supposed to go from six inches to 12 inches, and don't get me past all that.
Right.
But yes, it doesn't actually state within this agreement who that person is. We just want to show that the work, we've inspected it, that we say it's good to go, and we've done everything that we're supposed to do. And then we begin that process once they do that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham?
So I think probably the overriding question here is, what if, you know, Troy Davis or Basil Ginger goes out and finds a different contractor that says, you know, well, Dipper said he'd do it for $273,000, I can do it for $251,000? Are we still going to reimburse the, the $107,000 here? Or are we going to reimburse the percentage that's based on this bid of 273? And is that somewhere in the contract? I did read what you said about, you know, conditions of reimbursement, but it doesn't say the conditions are based on the initial bid, it just...
So it's on page two of 16. It's a payment in lieu of off-site assessment charges. And so there's an actual square footage, and there's where the information is, where we will reimburse the developer, how it's derived, and that kind of information. But it's, there's a total credit based off that, and there's a formula, I believe, somewhere, but I would have to find out.
So if the, so if the developer comes in under...
We will only go up...
We're still going to give them the $107?
No, we would have a formula that we use to adjust that. If it's over the $107, we will come back to council and request a newer reimbursement amount. If it's under that, we obviously would just pay the under amount of whatever it would be. Because we already have appropriating authority through the water main extension upgrade budget that we have currently in the water fund.
Ms. Rubio.
Madam Mayor, I have one more question on this map. I was trying to understand. The big solid red line is what we're putting in for the 12-inch. Maybe Eric can speak of this, I don't know. But...
Mr. Shaw, if you would, please.
The little line that goes to Basil Ginger. Correct me, I don't know, is it like 230 feet? 300, 400, I don't know.
So the map that was included in your handout today shows a long red line, and then a short line that goes down to the building, Basil Ginger, and then a short line that goes up to 800 South Roberts, I think it is. The long red line and the shortest line are the two that are in this, in this AM for upsizing for future service to the properties.
So are we paying for, as one says, the, the little line and the long line to the property?
Yes. We're, we're paying for the upgrade in size.
Is that normal process?
Yes. This is how the city has extended mainlines at the operation of development. So when, when there are unserved parcels and an entity needs to extend water service, this mainline, oversized water main cost sharing has been the method of extending city infrastructure to undeveloped properties. And then those undeveloped properties will have PLS associated with them. So when the next property is developed, that property owner will also share in some of that cost when they come in to get development approval.
So this is the normal process?
This is how water lines have been extended, and that's why you see a standard format in which it's brought to the council.
Thank you, Madam.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay, is that all of it?
One more.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
AM Number 2513, authorizing agreement and reimbursement to C T L Properties LLC in the amount of $39,950.66 for oversized water main costs.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Rubio makes a motion for AM Number 2513.
Is there a second?
Cottle, seconds.
The motion has been made by Councilman Rubio, seconded by Councilmember Cottle to approve AM Number 2513. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Rubio.
Now that I know this is the normal process, I do have one question. We don't have a bid in this packet for this AM, or proposed bid. Or I'm missing it.
You'll give him a minute. Director Shaw.
Director Mayor, if I can add to this. So this development's water line is a little bit less complicated than the one we just talked about. So the way that the cost sharing was approached was talking to suppliers and asking the difference between the original proposed, I believe it was eight-inch, and the updating to 12-inch. So this is based basically on just a supplier's ratio. And so it, it allows connection into the future into an underserved, unserved parcel.
Ms. Rubio.
So again, is this the process that we normally do?
With the fact that it's just a nominal size increase, the cost difference is the size of the pipe. So this is how the development allows the city to expand its infrastructure.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a couple of questions here. You know, number one, the development of Steen Commons, is that what it's called over there? You know, talks about double pumper hydrant. This one, even though it's adjacent to a lot of undeveloped property, only talks about a single pumper hydrant. I mean, if that, you know, undeveloped property becomes developed later on, are we going to have to upgrade it to a double pumper hydrant on this? Why wouldn't we do it here? And then the second question would be, in the summary statements on, on this and the one talking about Basil Ginger, Basil Ginger, it says, "The extension cost will be recovered through assessment upon future development." And on the Lane Dental, it says, "The extension cost will be recovered through connection fees when that future development occurs." So this kind of ties into what Ms. Rubio was saying, which, which is standard? Which, are they both standard? Are they, is it just not stated the same? Does it mean the same thing? I'm, I'm curious. So those two questions were...
So for your first question on the double versus single, the Basil Ginger facility is multi-use, so it has people living upstairs. So working with the Fire Marshal for life and safety concerns, that's where the larger hydrant was requested. They're both 12-inch lines, so there's nothing precluding the Lane Dental property from having the right flow, but they don't need a double pumper because it's just a dentist's office, no one's going to live in it. The 12-inch, it's, the water services are basically, at some point, going to connect into a loop, which is ideal for fire service. So that's kind of where we're planning to build out as those other undeveloped lots come online, will have a connection that provides water from both directions. Your question about the language is just scribbler's error between two different writers. So we will see connection fees when new properties become, come online for services. And then there's also payment in lieu of service, payment in lieu of assessment fees that are collected when properties are served by water. So there's a, it's a little confusing on how long-term fees are collected for water. But basically, when your property is served by water, then that property owner has a payment that they have to make. And then when you connect to it, depending on the size of the water line that you connect with, there's also fees associated with that, too.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay. Are we on to communications? Madam Clerk, please read the items by title in communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am Number 2505, 2025 A S C E report card for Alaska's Infrastructure. I am Number 2506, monthly financial report for the period ending July 31st, 2025. Two sets of commission meeting minutes, Planning Commission, February 11, 2025, and Planning Commission, February 25, 2025.
We are now at Audience Comments, which is a time for members of the public to share their views with the council. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Does anyone want to speak? I will call, close Audience Comments and bring it back to the dais. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to publicly thank Councilmember Johnson for his service. He was, he was just a really, he is a really good man, very easy to work with. I appreciate it, he asked good questions, and I will miss working with him. I wish him all the best. So the election update, then, with resignation of Tim, that seat will go on the ballot, seat C, which is a one-year term. Also up this year, seats E and F. E is currently held by Councilmember Vlak, who is ineligible for reelection this year due to term limits. And then Council Seat F, currently held by Ms. Rubio, who is eligible to seek reelection if she so chooses. Candidate filing period, July 21st to August 1st. We will see you all here next regular meeting, gosh, April 14th, and that is our budget introduction. So but, we are in budget, we are in budget and appointment season, so, holy cow.
Madam Attorney.
Just for a reminder, we're in Title 16 season as well. No other comments.
Councilmember Cottle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good meeting tonight. I'm also going to miss Councilmember Johnson, and I wish him well. A few meetings ago, I mentioned about a program that Matsu, Bureau Department, Matsu Central, is doing with house numbers. And, but I forgot to mention that they also have a program for installing free smoke alarms and CO2 detectors in homes. All you have to do is call Station 51, and they will either mail you out or, or email you out an application. They will install new ones for you. If you need your smoke detectors checked, they'll come out and check them. If for some reason you can't place batteries in your smoke detector, they will come out and do it. They have just this great program, and everybody should take advantage of it. There should be no reason that people don't have smoke detectors and CO2 detectors in their homes. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Ms. Cottle, is you called Station 51 to get the house signed also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, you will definitely be missed here. I appreciated all the comments and your questions. I feel like you, you definitely did provide valuable input, and it was great getting to know you since we somewhat campaigned at the same time, as well as just the time that we spent here on the council, and my time sitting in the seats, getting to listen to you guys. So it's been, it's been very good, and I have definitely learned a lot through what your knowledge and input have been here on the council. So you'll be missed, I wish you were here, that I could say this to your face. We'll hope to see you soon, so that I can say, say it as well. So only question I have is for our attorney. Do you have an update when we're hoping to see Title 16? I cannot remember, we've talked so much about it. What, what's our next meeting date on that one?
I think it's going to, I mean, the next packet deadline, I should be handing it over to, so it's in April. I think it's, it's, what's the date? Yes, you'll, you'll, it'll be brought forward to you in an introduction form in April.
So we will have it as an ordinance at our next regular meeting, is what you think? That's the intent?
I have a timeline.
I think the second meeting.
And I think it's the second meeting.
Second meeting in April.
I, I do think it's the second meeting. But I, I have to say, we are, we're making great progress, so it should be, you know, we've already gone, I'm on page 120 of a final read, and I think without the communication provision, that's, you know, very close to the end of the document.
So if the public has any questions about Title 16, call you, since you know more than anybody else who's read it that many times, is that what you're saying?
I don't know that I do, given the joint meetings and the sausage-making we have done as a, as a body. You know, I think this is a well-owned title, so that's, which is a great thing, you know, owned by council and the commissions.
Wonderful, well, thank you.
Right, Councilmember Crafton?
Yes, thank you all for tonight. We'll see you guys next time.
Councilmember Rubio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to thank Tim for his service. It was a pleasure having him on the team, and really look forward to seeing him around and hopefully catching up with him at some point. On a side note, Madam Mayor, the sign on K G B. I know I had asked that the last meeting. Do we have any update on that?
No, no, they have not come back. We had a meeting with them and told them what was what and whatever, and they were supposed to get back to us, and they've not got that yet. And I talked to the planning clerk today, or the city planner, and our code compliance guy has been out sick, so that delays things. But we're still...
Working on it.
Very much aware of that sign.
Okay, thank you. Great meeting tonight.
Councilmember Vlak. Councilmember Vlak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, yeah, I too, well, actually, Kathy, when it comes to the smoke detectors, I won't need that, because mine seem to work just fine about once a week while I'm cooking. I don't know, they're, they work great, so, when they, when that quits, yeah. When the, my dinner bells, my husband calls, it quits working, I'll let him know. And, yeah, I'll miss Tim. What I like probably best about Tim is that, you know, he can have his mind set to something, but he's not closed-minded. You can, he can see some other information and change it. And he doesn't have any problem doing that. And I like that about Tim, that, yeah, anyway. So, great meeting, and yes, he will be missed.
Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, a couple of things. You know, we talked about, uh, uh, Matching Grants Fund, and we've only used, you know, a portion of, about a third of it. I would be interested to hear from staff, uh, you know, before the budget meeting or during the budget meeting, about what other grants that might be used for. I mean, it's only about twenty-three thousand dollars or something like that. But if there are some small grants out there that we can take advantage of to improve the city, then I, I would like to, uh, to know about, uh, those sorts of things, so we can, you know, move forward on those and make, and make sure those happen, because we are coming up on the close of our fiscal year here. Uh, also, uh, before the next meeting, I would like to see, uh, the paving schedule, uh, set for this construction season. I know it goes through two, uh, fiscal years. You know, we've seen that every year, we haven't, haven't seen it this year, but I would like to see what that paving schedule is, you know, for the new roads, uh, you know, or the new paving, I should say, uh, of the remaining gravel roads and the roads that, that we intend to, uh, intend to repair, you know, uh, over this summer and, and the following, uh, fiscal year there. So I, I would like to see that. And it doesn't necessarily need to be in the packet, but, uh, just forwarded to all the council members, uh, would be pretty handy. Also, today, we talked about the report card, infrastructure report card. Uh, I did not go to the website to look at, uh, what appeared to be a fairly sizable packet, but if there were some specific items that they had for Wasilla, uh, it'd be nice to know what those were, uh, as opposed to just saying, well, bridges are a D plus, and water systems are a D. If there was something specific to Wasilla, it'd be nice to know what those are, so we can kind of keep that in the back of our mind, uh, as budget, um, things work, uh, through. Also, wanted to pass on that this, uh, last weekend, I went to the, uh, Palmer Chamber of Commerce Auction, which is a, a big fundraiser, uh, for them. Amazing would be how I would describe their community spirit. A cheesecake went for nine hundred dollars.
Oh my gosh.
This is a bakery cheesecake that somebody paid thirty-five dollars for. Uh, you know, uh, just amazing sense of, uh, community there. And I'm certainly not suggesting that Palmer is any better than Wasilla, uh, by any stretch of the imagination, but they are certainly different than Wasilla, and they have a different community spirit than we have. And, you know, uh, we try real hard to make things happen. It's not our job to make things happen at the council, but through, uh, support of organizations like WAZI and our other nonprofits, uh, you know, Matsu Health Foundation, for instance. I mean, that helps build that community spirit, and I certainly am glad to see that, uh, that we're doing that. And what, uh, kind of distressed me the most, the person that paid all that money for the cheesecake left about a third of it uneaten and got thrown in the trash at the end of the night, so. Uh, but anyway, but I mean, they probably raised, you know, just through the dessert auction alone, I mean, they probably raised fifteen thousand dollars. You know, that didn't include, uh, the auction for the, you know, M E A basket and the, you know, other things like that. So I, I really look forward to us continuing to support the nonprofit community here, uh, in Wasilla, because it's, there are certain things the government does, uh, and does well. And there are certain things that government doesn't have any business to do, of doing, and that's what the nonprofit, uh, sector picks up. So I was really impressed by that. So my congratulations to the Palmer Chamber of Commerce for, uh, doing a great job and pulling people together. And, of, and of course, lastly, uh, I too, uh, am truly grateful for Tim's, uh, Tim Johnson's time and service here in the council. Uh, like I mentioned earlier, I mean, he's, uh, been both the devil's advocate and the biggest supporter of different things. Uh, and like Ms. Vlak mentioned, uh, yeah, when you come to the table here, you kind of have some things set in your mind about where things are, and, uh, Tim was no different than the rest of us. But he was always asking questions to figure out if his preconception was correct. Uh, and he had no problem with changing that preconception when he heard, uh, you know, from the staff or from the public, uh, that, you know, maybe there's a different way of attacking that. So I really appreciate everything that he's done. Uh, I know he's going, uh, through some tough times personally right now, and, uh, won't be back probably for another, you know, at least another month or so. Uh, and I, I certainly hope to see him here, and I understand that we're gonna present something to him to thank him for his service. And I thank the, the clerk's office for taking the lead on it. So, to those of you remaining, Amy, thanks for being here. You know, it's always good to see the press somewhere, a place other than Palmer, that's great. And, uh, David, always, always a pleasure to have you here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, um, I would definitely, uh, like to thank Mr. Johnson for the time that he has served the city. He, um, he took it seriously, and he did it well. He will definitely be missed. So, we wish him well. Hopefully, uh, when he gets back and whatever, he will come and, and, uh, maybe sit in the audience. And still feel like he's part of us, so. And, Ms. Graham, to, uh, the things that you were, uh, wanting done or whatever, if you would send him to, uh, the clerk, she will, uh, send him up the path they need to take to get you, uh, the information that you want. And like I told you before, if you want to, uh, meet with any of the directors, you're more than welcome to do that. Notify the clerk, and she will get the process started. Because, um, as much as we're growing and whatever, we have got to change the way we do stuff. And I know change is hard, I'm old, I don't like change, I like things to be the way they are. But, we are growing, and with growth comes pain, unfortunately. So, with that, thank you all for your time. Thank you to the directors for your time, I definitely appreciate you. And with that, we are done, at eight...